Welcome to the town of Emmitsburg's town meeting for the evening of Monday, July 14th, 2025. We welcome you all for attending tonight. And just as a quick reminder before we get started, if you would check, kindly check your smartphones, make sure everything's muted, including any dings, alerts, rings, gaming, all that good stuff that might interrupt the meeting for people who are sitting near you. And with that, I invite you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We're going to go through some upcoming future meetings. We have Citizens Advisory Committee meeting here in the town office at 7:00 PM tomorrow, July 15th. We also have our next Board of Commissioners meeting on August 4th, 2025, here in the town office, as well as on Zoom, for those of you who cannot attend in person. And I believe right before that, too, there's a public workshop from 4:00 to 6:00 PM on August 4th, as far as the traffic calming study in regards to Lincoln Avenue, where different solutions will be presented, if you're interested in attending that. And we have our National Night Out, August 5th, 2025, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, in the Eugene Myers Community Park, like we do every year. It's great fun for the kids, a nice way to celebrate back to school. So please tell everybody to come out. It's always a good time. All right, are there any other meetings that I need to announce? Good? All right. Moving on to approving minutes for May 27th. So we will be looking at the updated minutes that was handed out by Ms. King tonight. Did everybody receive a copy? Okay. Does anybody need a minute to review, or is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against or abstain? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Ms. King. The second set is from June 2nd's meeting. I did have some, printed out some points of clarification for commissioners to consider. Those are, have been emailed to you, and they're also in front of you tonight. Are there any questions regarding?
I'm fine with the suggested updates. Thank you for printing it out.
Oh, you're welcome. I almost forgot.
And while everybody else is waiting, I do have one correction. It's page 10 of 57. The bullet towards the bottom, it's three bullets up from the bulleted section at the bottom of the page. The interest allocation policy will take effect in FY25. If we could change that to FY25. Um. Kim had sent out an email that it would go into effect retroactively to FY25, and I confirmed that with her at this, one of these meetings. So can you let us know if that, if it's not FY25?
Sorry. No, it was my understanding that full policy wouldn't affect as of July 1st, but if you already spoke to her, that's fine. I haven't spoken to her. She's been out.
Okay. If for some reason, there needs to be a follow-up on that, will you just let us know either way, so that we have clarification? Okay. Okay, so. Is there a motion on the floor? Any discussion questions?
I make a motion to accept June 2nd, 2025 meeting minutes, as revised.
As revised with the, how do we do this with FY25 or 26? Are we checking that? Or you can just change it, and if it needs to be amended? Okay, okay. And with the, okay, with the amendment. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussions, comments, Commissioner Hoover?
Let me clarify what Commissioner Sweeney, so he's, FY26 versus 25 was a correction that you, that you're approving?
Yes, ma'am.
The other stuff that was presented.
If they needed to.
So now, okay, so the question I have about these, then?
These were added.
Are these added, are these added notes, or are these corrections to something?
These, these two, three, and four are clarifications. I mean, we can go through them point by point, if you would like.
Well, right now, I'm just trying to get that clarification, what they are.
Okay, so like, number two, where it says, Commissioner Bowman-Pallett summarized what was being discussed and voted on regarding the water rates. The clarification is to list what we were voting on, because later in the minutes, it does say, Ms. Willetts noted the other change would be increasing mid-cycle reading from $25 to $50. This charges for mid-cycle readings of meters. So if we're talking about one part of the change, we should have the other, both parts of changes in there.
Understand now.
Yeah, so that's what that one was. The third one. Commissioner Bowman-Pallett wants to know why the elementary school is not at a max of 100% like some of the other schools provided. And that makes its, like, when I first read that, I interpreted that as, why don't we have more kids in the school? When I think with some additional wording, it could say something like, after looking at other APF ordinances in Frederick County, Commissioner Bowman-Pallett asked why the town is proposing to allow up to 115% of the SRC before implementing a mitigation fee, while others were at 100% SRC. So the SRC is the, allows for the clarification and not, why am I questioning how many kids there are at the school?
Okay.
And the last one was express concerns about making more space. That was just, I wanted to clarify that the discussion was how to ensure that the school mitigation fee would be used to address expansion, to accommodate larger class sizes, rather than just routine maintenance. Because maintenance can be, can be different than enhancing the look, you know, like just basic repairs. The top one was in addition. Where I did want to, I know we had, we, there were expressed concerns about whether or not the student housing special exception ordinance would, would give the town more control in limiting student housing. And we did go back and forth on that, but that, you know, the point I made is that it's not currently allowed, with the special exception, it will be allowed. So. And that's not reflected in there as one of the discussion points that we had.
What you said, though, is item one, then, is, is?
That's the addition.
Is an additional, is additional information to the minutes as a whole, not?
Right.
Not a clarification?
Yeah, two through four are clarifications, just so that.
For clarification purposes, corrections of minutes, then, I don't have a problem with two, three, and four, but add in information after the meeting was completed. We can add it to Kishman's comment somewhere, or whatever, but tonight, or whatever, but I just think, I don't want to alter the minutes. I mean, if it's a matter of clarifying, I don't have a problem with that, but alternate minutes to add new comments.
Historically, we have, we have in the past, so it's not anything that is not our pattern from previous meetings. So that's why I don't understand why there would be a problem adding that in, when we have other, other points in the meetings where there are other express concerns listed.
Am I understanding right? You're adding information that was not discussed at all at the meeting?
No, this was discussed at the meeting.
Okay, well, then, that it's not an add, or it's all new, then?
Oh, it's, it's add to the minutes, but it's not add to the, what was discussed. Sorry about that.
So, so what you're trying to say, then, is, is one through four, then, are items that? You're trying to clarify?
Clarify.
Clarify or balance out the whole?
Correct.
Discussion?
Yes.
They were, I think, what she was trying to get to, these were points that she had brought up during the meeting that weren't reflected in the minutes, and she wanted to make sure they were reflected.
Yes.
All right, now I better understand it. Okay.
Well, if I can make just one comment. You all have referred back to Robert's Rules many times in the last couple of months. And according to Robert's Rules of Order, minutes are not supposed to reflect conversations and opinions. They are supposed to be what the matter was, and how it was voted on, and who voted on what. So it's not supposed to be a detailed, you know, 50-page document. It's supposed to be a very small, itemized document. Since we have video, I mean, we can go back and review anytime we want exactly what was being said. So according to Robert's Rules, that's why there hasn't been a lot, and actually, they're going to be trimmed down further in the future, since I just got a a document back from our attorney saying that we, that is exactly right, that it's not supposed to be a long, detailed document. So that's why there hasn't been everything put in there.
Understood, but we're looking at nine pages of notes right now, and I don't think one additional sentence is going to make or break. If we have nine pages that we were looking at approving, that technically doesn't go along with Robert's Rules of Law. We can more, definitely look at determining as a council what we'd like to see moving forward. That is something that is, is mentioned in Robert's Rules. It also says under 2-14, custom in a society has equal authority with written rules unless it conflicts with them. So it has been customary in the past couple of years for us to add additional details. So this isn't anything different. I think we've heard the lawyer saying many times again, you know, as much as we'd like to follow Robert's Rules, it's a guideline, and it comes down to what the body or what the council suggests, and we can go by past practices for that. But we can add it to a future meeting if we'd like.
I know in the past year, year, year and a half that I've been here, we've, since we postponed some meeting minutes for such a period of that, so. And with that much information, maybe that's the better way to go. I don't know, but I'm not sure if that's how you want to go or not, but.
Well.
I know we have sent some back, and like I said, in the last year and a half, give or take, I've been here, just for, as a quarterback, then, was balancing them.
Right, right, understood. But we were also given express direction from the mayor, and that it was to please send suggestions ahead of time, rather than, so we can move things along, which is what I did. So if we would like, right now, we have a motion on the floor to approve with the, with the changes. So I'd like to entertain that motion first. If it dies, we can look at possibly tabling, if you would like it to be such.
I did a second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any against?
No.
Okay. Any abstain? Okay, minutes pass four to one. Moving on. Thank you.
Before moving on, I think we, this is the point with Robert's Rules, we should probably address and get it out of the way now. Look, I'm the champion of Robert's Rules. I think most people that know me know that. I keep a copy of them, and refer to them all the time. Robert's Rules, but I want to make sure people understand, Robert's Rules is the baseline, as long as you haven't put any other policies, rules, or procedures in place. So it's meant, if there's, you're silent on anything, what becomes the ruling document. So if we wanted detailed minutes or do this, because this is how it was traditionally, that's perfectly thing, but I think we should make it clear, so everybody's on the same page, and we don't get concerns of, hey, this was missed, and we really want this conversation, if somebody objects to something on the record. Because without anything out there, it is the default, which is, this is the subject, this is the vote, and who voted? And if the proposal is rejected, the reason for rejection in totality.
Well, that's what it says in Robert's Rules currently.
Right.
That has not been the discussion of this board previously, how we wanted to see.
Agreed.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm saying, this may, it may be time just to make that point clear, if that's what the board wants to do. And I think if you're going to get into that, also consider in staff time it takes to create minutes of that detail.
All right.
I'll add real quick, that the Board of Commissioners' Rules of Procedure specifically state that the minutes will be an accurate reflection of what was discussed. So our local rules will supersede what Robert's Rules says. Robert's Rules is a guideline, and we have a local rule already in place that the video recording will serve as the record until the meeting minutes are approved by the Board of Commissioners. So it is up to the Board of Commissioners on what they want to see in the meeting minutes, and this is what we've always done.
It's funny, though, that you only want to have detailed things with things you don't agree with. We don't do them for every item, as long as it goes your way, you're fine with it. But as soon as you don't agree with it, then you want it detailed. Can't have it both ways, but that's also been a past practice of the board.
Mr. Mayor, that goes both ways. So all's we're asking for is a balanced set of minutes, is all, I mean. All right, so moving on to the police report.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Deputy Bartholomew. I have the Police Monthly Report for June 2025. Personnel, it says two, but Deputy Hunter hasn't been here due to FMLA, so it's really only been me in town. So at least two annual days and 12 sick days. Special events, I was there for the pool party in June, which was great, no issues there. And Heritage Days as well. No fleet issues, handled 65 calls for service, one arrest, three stops, seven win cards. Call worth highlighting, we did have a report of a sex offense that happened, happened in May, but it was reported in June at the Mother Seaton Carnival. That's currently under investigation. Just got turned over to some detectives, so I'm working with them with that. And then the more detailed, I know we said we're not going to go over, I just wanted to add that I did add the asterisk at the bottom to kind of specify, past asterisk, it means that it was, it's just the town deputies. And then the things that don't have it are like, our whole, the whole agency, that way hopefully clears everything up there. Other than that, like I said, Heritage Days is good. Anybody have any questions?
Can you remind me what win cards completely is?
Yeah, so it means, we call it what's important now. So the reason there was an uptick in them was because Mother Seaton reached out to us and asked for increased presence, like, around carnival time and after the carnival time, while they were like setting up and taking down and stuff like that. So different, different events kind of bring that up, but it's, it's basically kind of like a patrol check, but it's more like, I guess it's more imminent patrol check.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I did have a question, or a resident asked me if there would be additional patrols for speed along South and North Seaton, like we had a little bit ago.
Any specific area or time?
You know, it, no, because people can go speeding down there at any time of day. I feel like when it's more empty, sometimes people whip down there faster than when there's a lot of traffic.
Okay.
And do we know, and this may not be a question for you, the, the crosswalk sign that used to be right across from the town office, the pedestrian, is that, that disappeared? Is it?
Yeah, it was hit, and the state highway's been notified. It's a state highway.
Okay, so they'll, they'll be able to replace it in the future. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just had a question. I get something we discussed during the Heritage Parade, and some, some people complained about the road closures, and that's, I thought, just want to make sure that I understood it. If we go over that 45 minutes to an hour, we should open the road at some point in the parade, or?
I mean, I would have to reach out to our traffic unit to get them more specifics on like what that stuff is. I mean, I would just, I would say, I think it would just mitigate issues. Obviously, if we maybe open it at some point, I mean, point, because 45 minutes is a lot of time, especially for the people that need to go back in the neighborhood here, down Cedar, they weren't being left to go there. So they couldn't even go around and come around. So if somebody needs to go home or leave home, they were kind of stuck for, you know, 45 minutes, which I can see being an issue, but.
Right. But I don't know what the permit has. We do have a parade permit.
Right.
Yeah, as long as, as long as the permit gets approved, and it's that time, you know, as long as it's approved.
The town should have a copy of it for the one we have, because they're the ones with, they apply for the permit for us for Halloween and for.
Right. Yeah, I personally didn't get any complaints, but I knew that one of the fire police said something to me about someone, someone was upset they couldn't get into, I guess, the neighborhood back here.
And I know we had a couple at the lineup, and I was letting them through, you know, hey, if you lived here, I'm going to let you through. And everything, I just know, yeah, talk that, and I wanted to make sure that, you know, we get that addressed next year. So it doesn't put you in a thing in a hot spot.
Right, yep.
We, we had a little informal discussion about the parade lineup for next year, and possibly moving it over to West Main Street, and keeping Mountain View and Annandale open. And that way, we can keep traffic moving that way, and there would be no delay at all, and possibly lining up in the Brookfield Development. Shoot me, but in order to, in order to get more of the community involved in the parade, it was just a beginning discussion, but, yeah, we're looking at that.
Any other questions? Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the Town Manager's Report, Ms. Willetts.
This is the manager's report from May, from May. Just a few noteworthy things related to the park. Staff worked at the pool to get the building up and running for the new season. They worked tirelessly at the new concession stand, putting equipment together, and finally getting it to pass its final inspection. Related to wastewater, in the month of May, just so everybody knows, we received 14.2 inches of precipitation, which was a lot for the sewer plant and water plant to handle. Trash will remain Monday, pickup on Mondays during the month of July. I listed some of the meetings I attended in May, just three noteworthy items. Bleak detection specialist, as well as Maryland Rural Water, was in to listen for any leaks on our water lines. Staff worked on the risk assessment and emergency action plan for Frederick County and FEMA. And we had a pump failure at the new Crimery Road Pump Station that causes sanitary sewer overflow at manhole number 898 on May 31st, and all those issues have been addressed, and the pump station is working well. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just had one. Under noteworthy, it says PFAS samples were collected and sent to the lab. Did we get the results back?
Yes, we are good.
No PFAS?
No.
Good.
Great.
Yep, we're good.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions, comments? All right, moving on. Grant Administrator Report.
Matt is not on issue. No, okay. I just highlighted, just real quick, the concession stand did final, received its final building inspection, which passed on July 9th. We, I don't know, did we receive the occupancy permit from the county yet? Do you know? Okay, I don't believe we've received that from the county yet, but everything's good on the concession stand. Newly awarded grants, we received a grant in the amount of $175,000 from CBT for the North Seaton Avenue project. And she listed the meeting she attended on page 21, and she's got several outstanding grants, most of which are related to the North Seaton Avenue project, and then a few other miscellaneous items.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Okay, hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Willetts. We're moving on to Town Operations Specialist Report.
Good evening, everybody. Real quick, about the crosswalk sign out front, I spoke to them right after it happened, State Highway. I'll follow up with them tomorrow, and I'll give you, I'll give you an update on that.
Perfect, thank you.
Let's see, for June, I've been working on the commemorative brick sales, and that closed the first round. We're going to open it up again in the fall. We sold 13 commemorative bricks, and we'll get those another, probably six weeks or so. Working on the 22 East Main beautification of the building and the bulletin board. Najila and I, she's been helping me with the legacy grant that's been approved, so that's going to be underway soon. Farmers Market's ongoing, first one was very successful. Next one is on Saturday. Still working on the emergency action plans development, that's just ongoing right now. Next month, I'll be presenting vacant property registration and tax, so I'm still working on that. And the Mount's Party in the Park for the upcoming freshmen, that is scheduled for August 16th, been working with them closely, and so far, so good with that. So that is, do you have any questions?
Just one quick question. You said, with the commemorative bricks, how many are available?
Oh.
A lot. More than 13.
More than 13.
Okay.
How many are out there? Do you know, Mr. Mayor?
Probably about 100, at least.
All right, so you said it would be opened again for?
Yeah, we're going to open again in the fall. I think we're going to do it twice a year.
Okay.
And I think we'll have more sales once everybody see how good it looks, when we get the first batch in.
Sure. Okay.
I might be way off, but I'm thinking it's, it's around 1,000.
Yeah, we can, we can keep going.
Yeah, it's going to be about 1,000.
Yeah, because we can just continue on and on as needed.
Okay.
So.
So way more than. Yeah.
There are applications, or not applications, with the forms to fill out, right at the front, at the front desk, or when you go out there, there's some that, right at the window, you can pick some up. And if not, anybody can contact me, and I can walk them through it.
And it's a walkway, correct? It's going to be a brick walkway?
Yes, where the bricks are, the bricks that are already there now. Well, not all of them are laid, but what, we're starting with what's there. Once we get these bricks, we'll take, pick up, remove the bricks that are there, and put the new ones in. And we're keeping a section just for like sports-related bricks, and then, you know, the rest will be, they can be memorial bricks, commemorative, recognizing athlete. And my name is Brandy Maloka. Brandy Maloka?
Okay. For the volunteers for this weekend, what positions do you still need help with?
Well, the soccer club has stepped up again. They're going to run the bounce house for me, and I have town staff coming in to help. I haven't, I've reached out to everybody, churches, everybody's busy. So I have staff helping me out.
Okay.
We're still really short. It's just me and one other person, so.
Okay, I'll come out. I know you need somebody like at 11:30, was originally what you were looking at.
Yeah. 11:30, 12.
I'll meet you there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, that was for the don't take.
Yeah, which we're not doing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And, oh, were there any other questions? We were good. Okay.
I don't know if it was this week, or like, did they do the? Feed the?
Oh, the free meals?
Free meals. We have one, do we already have the free meal this month?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, because, yeah, I think the Lions Club's got the next one in August.
Yes.
Yes.
Do you have the date of that, we're getting last Wednesday? Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney. Okay. All right, so we're moving on to Town Planner's Report.
Good evening. This is the Town Planner's Report from June. I've listed the seven permanent applications that were processed during the month of June, related to developments. Federal Stone and Creamery Court Extensions, they're under construction. Stormwater easement for the Creamery Court Extension was recorded during the month of June. For Christ Community Church, MD issued a non-title wetlands and waterways permit, something they've been waiting for a while, related to emit. Um, related to Emmett Ridge, uh, their updated final forest conservation plan was reviewed by the town. Uh, the developer intends to buy the forest banking credits to satisfy, uh, forestry requirements. Um, and then, unrelated to Brookfield, uh, staff comments on the final forest conservation and final subdivision plans were addressed. The developer has yet to submit the miler copies and the P and L for the forest conservation. And, um, they also have to address comments, uh, on the improvement plan. Uh, I'll skip ahead to MS four and, um, we, Arrow conducted the mandatory MS four training for staff. On June twenty-sixth, uh, MD comments for the MS four progress report was received, um, in June. And we're working with Arrow to address those comments. Arrow is also, um, conducting the listed discharge. Detection and elimination inspection, uh, ADD inspection. Um, related to Main Street, we, we've notified, uh, DHCD that, you know, will be a connected Main Street affiliate community, just confirmed that. Company has a plan. The sixty-day public comment, uh, period ended on June eighth. And the planning commission had a public hearing on June thirtieth. We received comments from the state, from the county and a few residents. And we also worked with Arrow to finalize maps. Uh, related to grants, we're continuing to administer the current community legacy grants for FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five and we've applied for FY twenty-six. Uh, we're closing out the I DNR IIJ grant. The final report was submitted. Uh, on the last day of June and, uh, I've listed the meetings that I attended during the month of June and that's our report.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Nope, okay, all right, thank you. All right, with that, we are moving on to, uh, commissioner comments. Start with Commissioner Hagan.
Just wanna, um, thank all the volunteers that came out for Heritage Day, made it successful again. Um, kids seem to love it as always, collecting all their candy and I know all the hard work. That goes into it, so I wanna make sure, yeah, we thank all those people that spend their free time making sure that happens. Every year and I'm hoping to see more people at the farmer's market this weekend.
Thank you. Commissioner, turn question. I don't have anything, thank you. Okay, Commissioner Sweeney?
I too want to thank all the organizations for all their help for Heritage Day, including the town. The town did a lot of help with us with bathrooms and, and getting everything ready for Community Day. The parade was extra big this year that, um, Kevin's, Commissioner Hagan's wife. Uh, handled the parade. It's, it was extra big this year. We usually only have a small parade, but she worked hard on getting it bigger. So we appreciate that because we used to have a nice parade through town. So, um, we appreciated her doing that. So everything seemed to be on. Um, we have some new, the soccer people are now helping with the Community Day. Um, they joined the, um, car show, which doubled in size. So, um, uh, all, all the organizations were there to help, the masons, the knights, the town, the Lions Club, Fire Company, everybody was there. So we appreciate, unless we get help from everybody, we can't do it. So, um, um, we appreciate everybody's help. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoover?
I, I have no additional, no additional comments?
Okay. Um, I just wanna echo everything that the other commissioner said about Heritage Day and also add on that we're very appreciative. That the fireworks were still able to go off as planned, um, considering we had, you know, yeah, it was raining, but it was a beautiful show. And thank you to all the volunteers and, um, as Commissioner Hagan already stated, please come out to our farmer's market this coming Saturday. All right, with that, we turn to, um, mayor's comments.
Okay, mine's a little different tonight. I'm, I'm very, very proud of to, to be able to, to make this presentation. And if I could ask the Jack Fordham to please come forward with me. I'll stand back here for a second until you get over here. Um, Jack chose Emmett'sburg as his, uh, Eagle Scout. Yeah, he can come on, come on up here. Uh, uh, but I gotta be close to our microphone. Um, uh, chose Emmett'sburg to, to do his, his Eagle Scout project, which, uh, is, is just, just fabulous. It gives you a great sense of, of pride knowing that there are still young, uh, men and women out there like Jack. And he chose to, um. Paint fire hydrants, which increased the, uh, the fire safety and the visibility of our fire hydrants and they were in, in dire need of, um. Of some, some maintenance and attention. And so, so much so, where Jack has left off, I have decided to pick up. So, uh, I, I found out I can't paint as many as Jack painted because I couldn't walk the next day. But, uh, but what he has done for our town is just, uh, just unbelievable and it made me so, so proud. So with that. I have a little letter here for you. Dear Jack, on behalf of the town of Emmett'sburg. I want to extend our sincere gratitude for your hard work and dedication in completing your Eagle Scout project. Your efforts to paint twenty-six fire hydrants around, along North and South Seaton Avenue as well as East and West Main Street. Have made a meaningful and lasting impact on our community. The hydrants were in clear need of attention and your initiatives brought both practical improvement. And renewed sense of civic pride to our town. More than just a fresh coat of paint, your work enhanced the safety of our residents. By restoring visibility and maintaining proper color coding, your help ensured that our first responders can act swiftly and effectively. In a time of emergency. That kind of contribution speaks volumes about your character, leadership and commitment to service. Thank you, Jack, for choosing to make Emmett'sburg the focus of your project. We are proud of what you've accomplished and confident. But this is only the beginning of many positive differences you'll make in the world. Wishing you all the best in your future endeavors. Frank, man.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure, everyone.
Thank you so much.
And, and I will have to tell you that the fire hydrants on Main Street are the ones that I started on and I was painting, painting them green. And, uh, the, the different colors of the hydrants has to do with the volume of water you can get out of them. But I did have a lady pull up to me and say, uh, well, I can see green is your favorite color. And I said, no ma'am. She says, why can't somebody else have a, a say in what color we paint these fire hydrants? I said, well, it has nothing to do with a favorite color. It's the volume of water. Yeah, whatever, whatever. So when you see different color fire hydrant, it has to do with the amount of water that comes out of them and the size of the main that they're running off of. So. Uh, thank you so, so much.
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Mayor Davis, did you have any?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, all right. And with that, we're returning to public comments. So we have two different sets of. We have public comment and public hearing. Since we're having a public hearing later as it relates to our, um. Thank you, com-plan. Uh, we'll save those comments for public hearing for that time. So right now, the only person we have, um, signed up for public comment is Mr. Eric Sloan. If you'd like to come up and turn on the microphone, you have four minutes. Um, you just have to state name and, um. Whether you're, live within town limits or not.
Uh, Eric Sloan, I'll live here in town. Uh, I really hate to beat a dead horse, but. Uh, the water thing. Now, there's gonna be expansion in this town whether we want it or not. Whether somebody moves in and says, I own fifty acres, I'm gonna build a, a megaloplex and you have to give us water. Or not, but somewhere down the line, say twenty years from now. We're gonna need to have sufficient water and we need to look for it now. I don't know how many of you remember a number of years ago, Thermont pulled mud up in their deep wells in the summer. It was probably ten or fifteen years ago. But that is what you don't want because that means. You're stuck and we have minimal amount of water for a maximum expansion. And if Frederick City moves up the way people are horrified of it. You know, things that we're gonna end with more and more developments in this area whether we like it or not. And we're gonna need to have water available. You know, it's, it's gonna have to be the point where you just turn it and you have it. Not that we're gonna do wells and look for it. And sewers, the backside of that, we're gonna have to have the space for that. So it's planted out now. For what you're gonna need in twenty years. Uh, I lived in Annala County years ago and they worked their developments out almost fifty years in advance. They put fire stations and other things in locations that you'd figure would never see anything and several of them now are. Hard-pressed to meet what's grown up in the area, but that was the only way they could buy the land. You know, buy it at ten thousand dollars an acre instead of a million and fight somebody for it, but they plotted it out. Yeah, it's just something we're gonna have to do.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan. And that concludes public comments. So we're going on to administrative business, um, review of town-owned rental properties.
Hello again. Um, so in the agenda packet is the breakdown with the properties numbered. And then the handout that I left with everybody and emailed are the photos with the actual addresses. I didn't wanna put that in the agenda. I think you. All can understand. And I'm not sure if you've had time to look over. Um, when I presented before, you wanted some photos. To show some of the, the houses that maybe you all weren't familiar with. And. Property number one, I think everybody's familiar with that with, um, on West Lincoln Avenue. I don't think that was the one in question so much. Does everybody have? Do, do you have the color copies?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, and the numbers are still the same as when presented before. Um, with the, the noted last. Increases. Hopefully can answer as many questions. As you guys may have.
Um, thank you for putting this together.
You're welcome.
And, and the photos are very helpful and being able to see, uh, prior history. Um, puts a lot into context as well. Um, one of the things I think we, we had hoped to see was, um. Recommendations from the town as far as, as rent goes, I, was that?
Right now, my understanding is that we're, we're, especially with, you know, like property number three in particular. Um, we're comfortable with what we are charging. Um, and as I referenced, number three on Crystal Fountain Road, if that driveway. You cannot go up it in a, in a, in a car. It's, it's literally a two-track filled with ruts and rocks and holes. Uh, my car wouldn't make it up. I'd have to, one of the maintenance guys take me and we still had to go very slow and it was like this. Um, I, I believe that that rent is actually very good for the condition of that property. Um, speaking to the staff just briefly, I, you know, minimal increases as the board would see fit. If, if, if the commission thinks we should. Um. We, the main one that we would definitely would want to increase would be property number six. It's vacant land and it's currently not being rented. The past, the rental income for that land was fifty dollars a year. But our property tax that we spend on is eighty-eight dollars a year. So actually, we lose thirty-eight dollars every year. So that one at a minimum, you know, should be increased, although it is not being rented right now and it hasn't been for a couple of years. Yes.
Um, so the way for property two?
Yes.
Uh, total expenses, does that include? Uh, septic holding?
Yes, that includes the septic holding and the proper, and the property tax.
Okay, so it's all, it's all included?
Yes.
Okay, cuz I wasn't, okay, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I should have broke that down.
No, no, it's okay. You did break it down. I just didn't know if it was included.
Okay.
Or, no, no, I just wanted to clarify, that's all.
And.
Yes.
Yeah.
Number three, I don't know, um, I mean Kathy can answer this. On DePaul Street, when they get ready to blacktop all the way down. From the beginning to the end, um, are they gonna mill overlay or are they going to? Do you know what they're gonna do? Are they just gonna lay blacktop over top?
I'll have to check and see what their estimate says. I can't remember off the top of my head, but I believe it's mill and overlay.
Cause if they mill it, the millions will be good for that driveway. I mean, they take the millions. I don't know what they're gonna do with the millions, but usually they don't use them for anything. They usually take them back to where.
We can discuss it. The, the tenant there has not complained and we do no maintenance.
They won't be good. I mean, it's, other than CR six and stuff to put in the driveway, the millions won't move once they get heated up and, and.
We, we can discuss that.
Yeah, it wouldn't cost the town anything if you, they usually look for a place to put the millions and they'll have a place for them.
Who's responsible for the maintenance of this or any other houses?
The, the, the tenants take care of.
All location.
They all do. And I even know, I noted that in property number four. Um, I mean, tree has fallen, he had property damage. We don't get anything. Um, none of these tenants actually.
Except for property number one.
Again, number one.
Right.
That's, that one's a little different.
The rest of it is.
But the rest of it.
In all maintenance.
They take care of everything.
I think, I think we pay for pest services.
Uh, number one, but the other ones.
Not the others.
I, when I went through, I had Kim give me expenses for all of these and.
Possibly number two, I'd have to look, but the rest of them.
Rest of them. I can double check on property two for the pests, but the other ones, there, there's.
The properties were all donated to town when we got the.
Right.
Five hundred acres for the.
Yeah, it was all part of the watershed.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. And it was one lump.
Yeah.
So we don't know.
Purchased them, they were given to us along with the land.
It's part of the, yeah, the watershed up that way.
A lot of people don't know that. We didn't purchase them, they were given to us.
No, we bought them with a grant.
Well, we, yeah.
We bought them with a grant.
We had grant money, but.
Yes. Two thousand two.
Two thousand two? Shoot, that's been a long time ago.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Thousand two is when we purchased.
Yeah, part of the, the, the land trust.
Correct.
Um, I can check on the pest control for property number two, but the other ones. Um, well, the only other, there's only two other additional houses and the rest, the other two are, um, just vacant lands. Pieces of land, uh, farmland.
Do we, do you know how it's determined? Um, where the, where the rent or the income that's generated? How, how you determine what fund it goes to, general fund versus water fund?
I would have to check, um, refer to Ms. Willetts or with Kim to find out. Um, my brief understanding of it, it goes to the general fund, but.
Accounting wise, it should go to the general fund. I, I don't see Kim not telling that. She's, she's.
Eighty-five thirty-three.
Which is. And property. And eighty-five forty-nine, but that's not currently being rented, correct? Eighty-five four-nine Hampton Valley Road, farmland. If you had said before that.
Correct.
Income goes to the water fund, but it's vacant right now.
Yes, it is vacant. And that is the one, if we do rent out again, that we recommend the increase because. We'd lose thirty-eight dollars a year because of the property taxes.
And it seems, I, there's three other properties that I think we should add and you can tell me. Um, eight-seven-one-one Crystal Fountain Road. Vacant, eight-eight-three-nine Crystal Fountain Road. It says vacant house, part of the land trust. And eight-seven-three-four Crystal Fountain Road, land, part of the land trust.
And I apologize, you're not in here, these, I, I'm going off of our property rental books.
They've never been rented. They've never been rented as far as, as long as.
That's probably why they're not listed, but I can look into that.
They're probably just parcels. We, we tore some houses down, actually they were mobile homes. They're probably just parcels. We, we tore some houses down, actually they were mobile homes. We tore down back in two thousand three, two thousand four or so. We tore down because they weren't, they weren't reasonable to be renting to anybody.
Wonder if there's still a house there.
No, no, we, we took.
No, we actually burned them down.
Yeah, we done, I think we done the drill.
So they are just vacant.
So they were removed, so, so it'd be just a vacant parcel.
And that's just part of the watershed then, correct?
As far as the fourteen hundred.
Okay. I apologize, I wasn't in there. I was going off of our rental book.
It's the ones I'm thinking about. Yes, they're just one, one of the many parcels that's up there.
Okay.
Randy, there's no pest control at part, at, uh, property number two.
Okay, there is not. Okay, thank you. It didn't come up. I don't recall seeing any pest control in, in the reports Kim gave me. Uh, minus number, property number one. And then property number four, again. The house that's on there is actually the tenant's, uh, small little trailer. Uh, it's a half acre. And he does all the maintenance there as well. And I want to say most of these people have been in these properties for, for quite some time. There, there's.
So is there? So i- is what I'm hearing that the, the town is not proposing any adjustments to rent?
Minus the one that we are.
What, where you're losing.
Right.
Okay, is that something that should be looked at? Can, looking at the.
Well, my understanding is that you, the board wanted me to put the information together for you guys to, to, to decide. That was my understanding to see.
Yeah, and we also asked for, um, recommendations for rents.
Okay.
So no, not at this time, we weren't recommending.
Other than, other than number six.
Correct.
Okay.
So I believe property number two was just recently raised.
Yes.
Number three.
It's, it's been some time. It's been at least four years. And it does seem a little low until you go out there and realize what it takes to get back there. It's the pictures that I, I was very surprised. And the, the, the tenant warned me and I actually had to do a U-turn, come back and get a ride.
Um, questions, comments from Commissioners, Commissioner Hagan?
I, I just wanna, the, the way in, it's something the mayor has said previously, you know, are we sure we want to be in the landlord business?
Well, my, my recommendation would be, once these current tenants move out. That we would take a real hard look to see if that's what we want to do. Like I said, the property was given to us. And the people were on those property, the property at the time. So we, we, you know, we didn't, uh. I guess that was a feeling of the board. Commissioner Hoover.
Yeah, there, there's a concern of selling some, some or all. Because you're on the watershed. So, so you, you know, you want, you want to, you want to control what you can of the watersheds. So the, there's, that, that's the real issue.
So with the, the feeling being once the long-term residents are no longer there, we're not gonna look to rerent them?
I would, I would, you know, be up to the board, but, but we would, I think we should take a real hard look at it. We probably should take a field trip. And so we can get a good.
You wanna make sure they're safe and have.
A good look at it.
Yeah.
And I do want to look at that driveway because we gotta make sure that emergency services can get back in there. Hopefully we can do it. Pretty cheap, but we don't want somebody living back there that we can't get, get an ambulance back.
Right. I was gonna ask about my ability.
We'll, we'll take a look at it. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's why it's about the millions and usually they don't. They might want to have a place to put them, so.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's a good idea. So. Um, I do, I do think some of these are still rather low. But it's up to consensus of what.
But don't forget, they're paying all expenses, maintenance and repair now to whatever standard. Would be something to look at from time to time to look at to see how well they're maintaining the property.
Sure. And maybe, and maybe that's.
Cause it's.
A feasible next step.
Cause it could be a, an expensive property for us later if it's not being maintained.
Okay.
Within reason.
That's a good point.
Yeah, I think especially since we're talking long-term residents there, you know, if the property is being maintained and. You know, that's should be our biggest concern at that point.
That's where most of your rent goes.
Yeah.
Your income.
So it's. You know, it's one thing to discuss after, you know, if somebody moves on, what we want to do with the property, but I wouldn't shake up somebody that's maybe been there ten, fifteen years.
And by the, by, from what I observed from the outside, everything, everything was well taken care of. I, obviously didn't get into the inside and I know on property two. I would have to go back through some notes, but I believe that they made. Not so much improvements, but have done some more. Cosmetically inside. That, because they're, you know, that is their residence and. And the one property, property number. Four, um, there's a lot of storage there. Is being used for, uh, other things. So it looks like there's quite a bit of items on that property. But it didn't look uncared for when you, when you see it. It's just, it has a lot of stuff there.
Now, I, I know property one, several, several, several years ago, we discussed about possibly selling. There was concern about the roof, has.
The roof has been replaced.
Okay.
Yeah, roof has been replaced.
Yeah, that would be one that, that, that I would really like to look, uh, once Pastor John gets his church and things like that, that we. We look to do something with, because that would make somebody a great daycare or.
Yeah.
Some type of a business. And, you know, we could use that, the funding from there to do something else, so.
And we did have that property appraised several years ago and the recommendation at that time was to replace the roof, in which we did. Obviously, we wouldn't need to get a current appraisal, but. We did do the roof. But the, everything else looked, from the outside exterior of the homes, um, that we own, looked well-maintained. So.
Thank you.
All right, um, any questions, anything you want me to follow up on?
Um. Commissioner Hagan?
Just that, you know, with the, the one property that we're losing money on, does you need anything from the board to, to change the rent? Or you can just adjust that without us saying anything, so we're not losing money?
The mayor can adjust it, um, but it's vacant right now, so there's really no reason in, until that happens.
Okay.
When was the last time that was rented? Was it years ago?
It, it's been, it's been several years. Um.
Okay.
I can find that out, but I believe.
It's okay.
It's just been at least three.
Has it, okay, hasn't been recent. All right, okay. Um, any other questions or comments? All right. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to consent agenda. For consideration, appoint Robert, is it Coley or Coli? Coley. Robert Coley to the Ethics Commission with an indefinite term beginning July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion?
So, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Commissioner Hagan, thank you for the second. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Okay, motion carries. Five to zero, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for stepping forward. It's really hard to fill vacancies and, and we really do deep down appreciate. There you go, thank you.
We appreciate it, thank you. If you can't say no, we have other openings too.
Yeah, if you don't say no, I, I, we, we have openings.
Thank you very much. Next, uh, for consideration, approval of amended ordinance twenty-five dash oh eight, title fourteen, adequate public facilities ordinance. Is there a motion?
I have a couple of, um, possible changes or clarification. You want me to proceed with that?
What, just tell me what page you're on.
Page thirty-four of fifty-seven. Number seven at the bottom. For use of funds, the town may appropriate funds from the school mitigation fee, blah, blah, blah. Uh, we had talked about adding council in there, so it would say the town council may appropriate funds.
I do remember that conversation. I'm trying to remember what Clark said in response to that. And then page thirty.
Leslie did write this based off that meeting. I don't remember what she said either.
I think she said, um, when it's the town, that means the board decides, so.
That's what I.
Yeah.
The, the town is. The board.
So the only other change would be page thirty-eight of fifty-seven and just correct Sweeney. And that's it.
Okay. Oh, you, the spelling.
In the, in the, in the chart.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right, thank you. That's all I have. Any other? Questions, comments, additions? So it looks like the, the only thing we would do is. Yes, okay. Is there a, a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance twenty-five dash zero eight, adequate public facilities act. With the, with the correction of Commissioner Sweeney's last name.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Several.
Thank you, Commissioner Sweeney. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any against? Any abstain? Okay, motion carries. Five to zero. Moving on to the treasurer's report.
This is the town of Emmitsburg cash activity as of June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Cash balance on June first, twenty twenty-five, seven million, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Deposits totaling two hundred and eighty-one thousand and twenty-nine dollars. Withdrawals totaling seven hundred and seventy thousand, nine oh nine. Uh, the top ten checks are there in the middle of the page. Our fund breakdown as of six twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, our general fund has a balance of one point four million. Capital projects, eight hundred and eleven thousand. Stormwater management, almost sixteen thousand. Water is in the red, a hundred and forty-six thousand. ARPA funds, one point five million. Sewer, three point six million for a total of seven point three million. That's it.
Okay. Questions, comments? I did have, um, questions about, uh, solar field one and two and how, how that works specifically. Is that something we can have additional information on in the future?
Yeah, actually at, uh, MML, um, Commissioner Hoover. Was, uh, trying to talk to someone that can come in. It must not be an easy calculation, uh, to try to figure that out. But we, we want to do that, because it's always been a question of mine. Is it good? Is it bad? I mean, we have it now, so I guess we're kind of stuck with it for, for a while. But, uh, did you find anything out with that?
No, not really. So what I talked to him about was the possibility of somebody coming in doing a, a survey or report on our behalf to figure out. The value of it, the cost of it, the. What should we do next time? But we've got probably what, another fifteen years or so further out before we reach the end of our current lease. So it's, it's a bit early in that stage, so.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, it's just, I know. There have been questions hoping to get additional information on, on how it works and we haven't received that information yet. So I was just hoping to. Follow up with that, even if it's not at a meeting.
Information meaning.
Like how, I mean, as far as like how much we bring in and how much.
Last year it was part of the budget PowerPoint that we did for solar. Obviously, we didn't do a PowerPoint this year to, to show how it's calculated. Kim, Kim explained how it's calculated. She's, she's very good at it. Um, I can't really explain it. I, I mean, I understand it up here, but to try to explain it. She would be better at it than I would.
Okay.
So I think what everybody's question is, and it, it was mine too, several years ago. What would it cost us for electric if we were just buying from Potomac Edison compared to what are we doing now?
Right.
And, and where, how are we coming?
Well, I'm sure. Commissioner Turnquist could probably attest, she sees the electric bills and how small the majority of those electric bills are for. The majority of our accounts, because you're getting, not getting charged any of the fees, any of the generation fees, any of the transmission fees. Any of the additional charges. So you have very nominal, or minimal, um, electric bills except for your host accounts. Which is one at the water plant, but even that being roughly about sixteen hundred dollars a month is still. Tremendously less than what would it be if you were paying all electric at the water plant? But certainly, I, I mean, there's no reason why the staff can't do a presentation on it at some point, um, to show the calculations and show. If you look at the chart where we were spending on electric bills in twenty twelve before this started and what we're spending now. If it's not less, it's about the same. And in thirteen years, if your electric bills have not gone up, you're doing pretty good. Um, but the actual calculations and how the credits come in, um, between the electric company and then the solar company. That would be something she would have to explain how that all gets calculated, because we do get a rebate every year. Based off of how many, um. Is it kilowatt, kilowatt you have left? How much you generated, how much was sold, um, things like that, but she can explain better than I can.
Yeah, and that's, that's one I'd like to put to bed. I'd like to figure it out, put it to bed, give the report. And because there are people out there that keep stirring the pot, that say we're losing money and, uh, I'd, I'd like to put that one to bed. So we'll, we'll put that on our.
That sounds.
And one thing to keep in mind is the, the, the solar fields, they do continue us, continue to allow us to get the sustainable awards. And we do get a lot of grant funding because we have gone green in a lot of areas. So, um, just keep that in the back of your mind when we're doing the presentation, but I can certainly talk to Kim about putting something together. Maybe early September-ish.
Yeah, that's fine. And I mean, like, like Commissioner Hoover said, they're not, they're not going anywhere, but it's just something that I think. A couple of us expressed an interest in, in understanding how it, how it works.
I think in the early years when the first phase of the sort of one-on-one, I think a lot of those questions were more realistic of, you know, it was costing us more than it. We weren't using as much of the solar as we. Had attended on at that time. So you was buying all of it, even though you may not have really been using all of it. But as they expanded the system, I believe a lot of that has changed, and whether it's balanced out or not, Kim could tell us that.
Right.
I'm sure it has, and I agree with what you're saying. We're losing, we're, we're losing the cost of all the. Transition fees and, and.
Right.
Other, other companies providing this, right here, so.
Right, and that's, and that's, I think the clarification we were seeking, because if, looking at the treasurer's report. It doesn't, it doesn't look good, but that's not factoring in everything else that goes into it. So just trying to.
It only don't look good. Well, I can't say only, but it most likely doesn't look good because you don't have Potomac Edison's numbers next to it. What would it been?
Sure.
Had you not had this.
Right.
And that'd be the comparison you want to see.
Correct, yeah.
Our, our cost versus.
How much of the solar?
The residents.
Town uses.
Right.
For everything that we have, the lights, town lights.
I think we have every single account we possibly can have on solar fields. Our hope will be to put the, the, um, new clarifier on it as well when it's up and running. The, um. Yeah, anything that we have, we put on it.
Yeah, okay.
How much is left over after that? I don't know, that I don't know.
Okay. All right, um, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other questions on the treasurer's report? Okay, moving on. There was no planning commission, so we are moving on to agenda item number one, holding a public hearing. And then consideration of resolution twenty-five dash oh three, are adopting the twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan. Entitled envision Emmitsburg, so. So our next agenda item will be to hold a public hearing, as I had just said. At this time, the public. At this time, the public hearing shall commence. And I just lost Ms. Willetts. So, is Ms. Najila, do you know if the hearing has been properly advertised?
Yes.
Thank you. If anyone intends to provide testimony during the public hearing, please raise your right hand and give the following oath. So, we do have two people signed up for public hearing comments. Andrew and Eric, um, if you would please raise your, uh, raise your right hand, please, and say, "Do you solemnly swear or affirm under the penalties of perjury that testimony given to you in these proceedings will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth?" I want to say, and so help you God, but it's not in there. If so, please state, "I do."
Oh, Andrew?
Oh, is Andrew here?
Yes.
Is that an "I do"? "I do"? Okay, all right, thank you. And we were going to turn it over to the town attorney, she is not here. So, where would we like to go?
He called in a sec.
Does he know? Oh, okay, so who will be? Who will be presenting, Najila? Okay, all right, go for it.
Um, so, this is the proposed draft of the twenty-twenty-five comprehensive plan for Emmitsburg. It's been recommended by the planning commission for approval after holding their own public hearing on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, this document serves as the town's long-term policy framework for managing land use, development, infrastructure, and public services. Its adoption fulfills the requirements, uh, under Maryland Land Use Article that jurisdictions must update their comprehensive plan every ten years. The plan aligns with the Maryland's twenty-twelve planning visions, which were required, which were the required elements at the time of drafting. Although the Maryland Department of Planning has since adopted a new set of eight principles, planning principles, jurisdictions adopting plans before October twenty-twenty-five are not required to incorporate them. Nevertheless, uh, the key elements of these principles are reflected through, throughout this plan. Development of this plan was shaped by public input. Workshops focused on the three pillars of sustainability, economic vitality, social equity, and environmental stewardship, and these guided the community engagement process. Plan highlights include housing strategies that promote diverse housing options, economic development initiatives aimed at business revitalization and job growth, smart growth policies that balance development with the preservation of Emmitsburg's natural and historic resources, and, uh, introduction of, uh, growth boundary and growth opportunity area to ensure growth aligns with the town's infrastructure, infrastructure capacity. Uh, the plan also outlines strategic action steps for each focus area, and the implementation, uh, strategies include the infrastructure investment, zoning updates, development incentives, enhanced code enforcement, and leveraging, uh, grant opportunities. This is intended to be, uh, a living document rooted in community input and designed to adapt over time. It intends to position Emmitsburg to manage change in a way that preserves the town, town's identity while embracing sustainable growth and making this vision, um, is a reality that will be ongoing and collaborative effort.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Um, at this time, we can have our members of the, the public come up, so starting with Mr. Eric Sloan. You're good? Oh, you took the oath. I made you take the oath, though, okay. And, uh, is it Andrew Taylor? Is there an Andrew here? No?
He's here for the lead line.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I made everybody take those who didn't need the, okay. Would you like to say something? You were sworn in. Okay, all right, thank you, sorry about that. So we'll just keep him for, okay, keep you for the line, all right. So, hearing no public comment, we are moving forward. Oh, oh, um, Ms. Uh, Ms. Wahlbrecker, "Do you solemnly swear or affirm under penalties of perjury that testimony given to you in these proceedings will be the whole truth and nothing but the truth, and if so, please state 'I do.'" All right, thank you. Would you like to come and provide some public comment?
I should know better. Diane Wahlbrecker, I live in Emmitsburg. And I know the town fully appreciates this, but I just want to state it out loud. Um, and Vince Hodges, Hodge was here earlier, but missed this presentation, so I think it's important to state that when Najila says there was public input, there was public input from both of the senior living facilities. There was public input put from people that we just went out to and members of the planning commission went out to and talked to on the street about this. And there were meetings also with N E T C, National Emergency Training Center, and with Mount St. Mary's. And so it's really important to note that continued citizen input is going to be important if we want to keep our town and maintain our town the way that we want it to be. So I just wanted to state that publicly, like I said, I know the town believes that. But just wanted to state it since I'm here, and I'm sorry that Vince didn't get a chance to stay and, and get thanked publicly.
Yeah.
So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So. Um, is there anything else you wanted to add, Najila, before we move on?
No.
Okay. I was expecting more, huh? Right, so. All right, so at this time, we get to close the public hearing and have a discussion about the comprehensive plan. Do I need to hit the gavel to do that? We are closing public hearing and moving into discussion. So, commissioners, questions, comments?
Just want to say, we've been, uh, the, the planning commission and residents have been working on this for over a year now, and as Ms. Wahlbrecker pointed out, not only do we have the public hearings here where they were great and I love being able to put the little notes up on the boards, and I think that we got a lot of good information out of that over the years, but, uh, to piggyback on this, the mayor also had, okay, a small committee that went out and talked to our social organizations and our businesses, you know, FEMA and everybody to get the feedback, so we tried to get a pulse of where everybody was at and what was important to them. And I, I have to say that when I looked at the original plan compared to the plan before this, I want to say how impressed I was with the work and some of the points that Najila pointed out in the plan when the, the original draft was planted to the planning commission. So it was a lot of things I think get, would normally get overlooked, and I really appreciated her including a lot of those points about, you know, our underserved residents and where we can improve and help the lives of a lot of the people and Frederick, and how we do that and where the long-term plan should be and where is it, and those things get left out very often. So I, I just want to thank her to make sure she knows how thankful I am that she included on the original draft a, as the chairman of planning, I didn't say a word to her when she originally came to me, that language was there, so it wasn't withdrawn, and it, it just, I am so happy to see a lot of that language.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Turnquist?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the members of the planning commission and, and Ms. Diane for all their efforts in reviewing the document, repeating, repeated, repeatedly reviewing the document and, um, over a period of, gosh, I don't know, it seems like it was a year and a half. And Najila was always gracious with taking recommendations and making changes and providing the information that was requested. So I really appreciate everyone's involvement and the community too, who showed up to put notes on the, on the board, sticky notes on the board. I think it made a huge difference, and I think the plan is amazing. So thank you all.
Thank you. Um, I'm sorry.
I, I just wanted to piggyback on Ms. Turnquist, I want to thank everybody for the help and all their, um, getting everything ready and how much we appreciate having our new planning person here, Najila. She's a wonderful part of our staff and that's, you did a really good job on this, thank you.
Commissioner Hoover, I feel like we're going down the line, so.
Well, I agree. I mean, I think, I think Najila and staff have all done a very good job with this, so I've been on the planning commission for the past six, eight months, whatever it was, but I've enjoyed the opportunity to work with her, and I think she's done a great job and, the planning, planning commission, you talked about it earlier, um, at our meeting last time, and I think everybody there was happy with it. To put this, the public we've had or the times that I've been here, been very happy with it, so. I think it'll last for quite some time, so I'm very happy with it.
Okay.
So.
All right. Thank you.
Going down the line, I'll let you go and then we'll make a motion.
Why, thank you.
Then I'll make a motion.
I did hear a lot of positive feedback about the way you structured the sessions to make it collaborative and, um, to give, it was more of a, a conversation, and I think that was truly appreciated. And it was a wonderful way to make an entrance into your position here, so thank you for being able to have that kind of wonderful project to, to launch your career. And I agree, it's a lot of hard work and I've only heard good things about it, and, um, I just had a, a few questions. I know, um, you received a lot of feedback from lots of different officials when this was submitted, and some of them, I think, are just reiterating what was already stated in here. As far as uh, some of the suggestions about looking at, um, identifying goals or actions for possible homeless population, or it did say something about assessment of fair housing. Is that, is, has that been incorporated as well?
Um, about, um, affordable housing and accessible housing, yeah, that's been incorporated, yes.
Okay, and, um, not that it has to go in here, but they did say something around identifying goals and actions regarding services for people experiencing homelessness. Is that something that we can just keep in mind on the planning commission moving forward, and, because I know we have a lot of services here in town already. And I believe a lot of that was outlined in here, too.
Yeah, so a lot of that was, I don't know, a bit a lot, so that was discussed more than once.
Okay.
And that did come up, and Najila did put comments in here that of the planning commissions or the town of Emmitsburg concerns of that-
Sure.
Of that nature, of those things.
Okay.
The different things with, uh, mother's, senior school, college, all the different aspects of the town, whether it be education, whether it be homelessness, whether it be housing types or businesses and all, so there's a lot of comments made as far as while we may or may not have direct control over it.
Right.
That we, but we do recognize a concern and a need for the community and the town as a whole in the future.
Nice job.
Did a good day right, Najila.
There you go. That's all I have. Any other questions, comments? Is there a motion? Yeah, okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to, for, to adopt the town of Emmitsburg comprehensive plan for twenty-twenty-five entitled Envision Emmitsburg as presented tonight.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comments or questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstain? Okay, motion carries.
It needed to be adopted via resolution.
Oh, geez, I'm sorry, I didn't get in fast enough.
Aye.
Sorry, I was, I was, I need to be on the end, so I have a, a global view because the head swivel doesn't work. All right, so let me back up.
They restate that then. I'll make a motion to accept the Emmitsburg Comprehensive Plan and Vision Emmitsburg twenty-twenty-five, resolution number twenty-five dash zero-three R.
Okay.
Pass that down.
Thank you. Is there a-
And I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagan. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? All right, motion carries five to zero. Congratulations. So feel good.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, when we talked about the growth boundary there, since we changed how we do it in that recommendation, that was a brave step on your part, being able to go with that. I think that should be, because that, that was not the standard that this town had ever used in determining the growth boundary. And with the discussion and change in how we were going to do that was, I, I, I think a, a big step that showed.
Thank you. All right. And then from there, um, number two was postponed regarding the rental registration, so we're going on to item number three, which is update on the lead line service inventory. And then you can just hit the little red button there. There you go.
Good evening, my name is Andrew Talea. For those that don't know me, I work with Arrow, and, uh, we have been helping the town comply with the lead and copper rule requirements, and I'll be giving a brief presentation on the town's progress in doing so. Also have a PowerPoint presentation for those online. And, uh, everyone up, up here also has a paper copy, so I'll go through, hit the high points, and if there's any questions, you know, we, we can answer them as we go or at the end of the presentation. So, uh, slide, so, great. Long story short, all public and private water systems, uh, community water systems and non-transient, non-community water systems, that serve over a certain population have to comply with this requirement. Uh, the town has its own water system, so it falls within that category. Uh, slide, please. There we go. So there are three pieces of federal legislation that, uh, apply to the lead and copper rule, first being the nineteen ninety-one federal legislation that, set a goal to reduce lead in drinking water across the country. It, uh, reduced the, uh, previous threshold, uh, that was established at the federal level for lead in drinking water, parts per billion. It set an action level of fifteen, uh, uh, parts per billion for lead in drinking water and, uh, thirteen hundred parts per billion for copper. And long story short, if there's an exceedance of that, water systems must take action. That was the first piece of legislation. Slide, please. The second piece of legislation that came out, um, and this is more recently under the Biden administration, was the twenty-twenty-one lead and copper rule revisions, or, uh, L C R R. Um, and that did a number of things, but, uh, the main thing as it applies to the town is, there is a new requirement or was a new requirement set that you have to inventory all your water lines, and that inventory must list the location, material type of the water service line, uh, the date that it was installed, if known, and all that information needed to be put into a database and submitted to, uh, each applicable state that it, that had to adhere to these federal regulations by, um, October sixteenth of twenty-twenty-four. That doesn't mean you need to know exactly what type of service line material each service line, uh, consists of, but you need to do your best at gathering this information and submitting your report by that date. Next slide, please. And on top of that, that database must also be made available to the public upon request if under fifty thousand customers, the town has under fifty thousand customers, so on the town website, it does have language that says, if you wish to see a copy of this database, you may do so upon request, and we'll provide you with a copy of the database. It also required more treatment at schools, that's okay, slide. And, uh, as I previously stated, um, we submitted our inventory to meet this requirement. Uh, many of you may have gotten a letter in the mail or seen online where we are asking, uh, residents or businesses to actually tell us what their service line material is on their side of the service line. This requirement is exactly what those letters were, um, uh, required for, and the goal was to collect information from each individual property about their side of the service line and the material and the other information that they might have, that the town might not have. And in doing so, as part of that compiling that database, we also looked at a number of historic records that the town had on file, including drawings, plans, maintenance records to populate that database. Slide, please. And upon submitting the initial database in October 2024, another requirement of the LCRR was to notify any customer that has one of three categories unknown, which means there's not enough information to categorize the service line as lead or non-lead on either side of the water service line. If you had a lead line or a galvanized line, you were required to get a letter stating as much. That does not mean that you had, that if you got the unknown letter that you have a lead service line, all those letters adhere to the state's required language template that they issued, that it also addresses the federal regulations for communication of lead service line databases. So, those letters went out in November and we also confirmed with MDE back in June that those letters went out, which is also a requirement of the legislation. Next slide, please. So the third piece of legislation, the LCRI, or Lead and Copper Rule Improvements, replaced the previous two pieces of legislation and from the adoption date of 2024 requires all lead and galvanized service lines must be removed within ten years of that legislation. It also required some more additional testing for water service providers at their distribution facility. And it also updated the prior notification language and also required that we notify schools in certain circumstances of lead service, of lead action level exceedances. And it also noted that we had to continuously update this database. So I mentioned that we submitted an initial database in 2024. We will have to resubmit and update that database every year for the next ten years as part of this program. So it's not just a one-year thing. At this point, it is an annual, there are a number of annual requirements that we have to meet, including the database, including sending out the letters to unknown lead or galvanized properties. Next slide, please. So, I said it a couple of times here, service line, so anybody that is on the public water system, you have a line that runs under, there are mains that run under the streets, obviously, and then from that main, there is a service line that runs within the town right of way of the road or for the state roads, state right of way. And then that eventually crosses your property line and goes into your home, delivering drinking water to your home. And for those that don't not know, up to a certain point of your property line, the line from your property to the main is owned by the town. The line from the property line into the home is typically owned by the water customer. And so, one thing that people might not know too about this database is even if we have a picture showing that the customer side is copper or the town side is copper, need to have that information for both sides of the service line. So we have to categorize not just the service line as a whole, but information about the town on side and the customer side, which could have been replaced at different times potentially and could have different materials potentially. Next slide, please. The purpose of the service line inventory of filling out this database and submitting it annually is to give the state a snapshot of how we are complying with these regulations and how many service lines we have that are lead or galvanized that may need replaced at some point. It can change and, you know, we are updating it every year, but it's essentially a snapshot of where we're at with complying with these regulations. Next slide, please. So there are four types of service lines that you can categorize within the database. Lead, meaning you have a lead service line, a galvanized pipe that requires replacement. The reason that galvanized pipes require replacement is because they can actually hold lead particulates within the material. Non-lead, for those that don't not know, if any new service line that was installed after May 17th of 1972, at that point in Maryland, lead was outlawed. So, any home that was built after that date, we can automatically rule out as being non-lead. And then lead status unknown. If a home was built prior to that date and we don't have records or we don't have a customer survey that they sent back with a picture of the service line on either side, that has to be categorized as unknown for the time being. Next slide, please. Mentioned it, we spent a lot of time and the town has spent a lot of time over the past year compiling documents that we can pull information from in order to populate this database. You know, unfortunately, you know, well, yeah, unfortunately, a lot of the homes in the town were built around that 72 date or prior to. And, you know, this is with all towns and municipalities, the further you go back, it's harder to find some, you know, written documentation of activities, infrastructure, et cetera. So, we've really been trying to gather as many materials as we can find to populate the database. And that's an example, there's a number of examples of documents that you can pull to populate this lead and copper inventory. Next slide, please. At some point, when we've exhausted all options in terms of reviewing records and when we have exhausted the residence ability to give us photos of their service line, the town is going to be required to do some type of field verification to eliminate the unknowns, so you can, you can get that information from a number of locations on the service line. Typically, you want to offset that test location if you're doing like an excavation method, eighteen inches from the curb stop, either towards the street or to the building. But if it's inside the residence home, you can actually use the service, you know, if you walk down your basement, a lot of time, you can actually see your water pipe going into your home. You can actually take a picture of that, and that's why we ask residents to take a picture of their service line and send it to us. You don't need to excavate on the customer side. You can use a picture of that pipe material and satisfy the identification requirement on the customer side. Next slide, please. But eventually, like I said, at some point, we'll have to do some type of onsite verification to eliminate all of the unknowns that we currently have in the database. Next slide, please. So, you don't necessarily need to go out and field verify every single unknown property. I think off the top of my head, we have about, as of the last submission, we have about four hundred seventy-two-ish unknown properties, so. And the good news is that there's, there's a very small percentage of the information we have now showing lead or galvanized service lines. I believe we have seventeen galvanized pipes so far and two lead service lines. And I believe that all those were from the customer surveys, so we still need to go out and actually verify that that's the case. But we have over fifty-three percent of the town's service lines categorized, so let's just pretend like we're at twenty galvanized or lead, so let's double that for the remaining forty-seven percent to be safe. So what we're looking at is doing twenty percent field verification of your unknowns. So, right now, I said we have four hundred seventy-two unknowns, so you need to do twenty percent verification on those. So you're doing a small subset of field verification. So in this case, you know, as of now, we'd be doing about ninety-four-ish actual onsite verifications. And we're hoping to continually narrow down that four hundred seventy-two, hopefully between this year and next year, so that, you know, the goal is to do as much record review as you can, so you spend less time and money doing in-field investigation. And you also need to verify that, once you've explored all your options and ready for field verification, you have to do a predictive model of, alright, here's our unknowns, here, here's what we think these unknowns are based upon data we have now. And you want to look for a ninety-five percent accuracy when you do your field verification. So, for example, if we have a development and we have on the, you know, northeast, northwest, southwest quadrant, all populated with actual photos of the service lines and we're guessing, alright, seventy-five percent of the neighborhood's copper, we're gonna guess the other twenty-five percent's copper. You want to get a ninety-five percent accuracy in terms of actually field verifying that some of those are copper. Next slide, please. And so, once you actually go out and do that twenty percent verification, you'll be left with a categorized service line for every single property. So, at some point, we'll know exactly how many lead service lines we have based upon that field verification and galvanized pipes that need replaced. And, you know, really, that ten-year clock started in 2024. They want to see, when I say they, I mean MDE, are the ones who we ultimately report to. They want to see on average a ten percent replacement rate over a ten-year period, but they only check every three years. So let's, you know, it's 2025 now. In theory, we should have twenty percent of our lead or galvanized service lines replaced, but it's on a three-year rolling cycle. So at the end of three years, they'll say, are you at thirty percent? If you are, great. If not, we just need to provide an update on when we think we'll get to our replacement. And, you know, in theory, we don't want to do, you know, the goal would be to identify where we have lead service lines, galvanized lines, eliminate the unknowns and do it all at once. I mean, that's the most cost-effective way to go about it. So, and they understand that, so if we show that we're going to be doing a hundred percent replacement or fifty percent over a two-year period, that, that should be acceptable under MDE question.
So they the main, just Main Street, the main streets?
They're all over. It's all over, the unknowns.
I know the developments are all newer, so they should have cop, I know mine was galvanized. I changed mine over.
Okay, did you?
Every hours, my house is, North Seaton, that was one of the first, it was built nineteen oh three, I think it was.
Gotcha.
So it's one of the original ones on that side, but mine was galvanized out. I didn't know it was galvanized till we had problems with breaking.
Right.
But I imagine there's the older houses that are there, too, are all galvanized.
Yeah, so the
Older houses.
Yeah, so most of the unknowns are older homes. I don't have a map, I don't have a map that I could visualize exactly where they're at. They are somewhat spread out. I mean, the town was developed, you know, prior to that seventy-two date, a lot of the streets already had homes developed at that point. But I would say it's, it's typically center of town in areas where the homes are older in age is where you have your unknowns. And again, even, and this is a good point I would just want to communicate tonight, we appreciate all the responses for the survey. We've gotten over six hundred fifty surveys to date. That saves a lot of time and effort for the town eventually to have to go out and do field verification. The one question that we get is, will I get a letter again? If you send us a picture and you have copper, but the town side is technically unknown because we don't have a record, you will get another letter if that not, if that status has not changed by the time we have to do the report in October. So, I just want to forewarn everybody, if you get a letter saying, hey, your service line is unknown, we very may, we very may well have your side, it's the town side or vice versa. And frankly, if you Google lead service line letters, every single town and every single jurisdiction has a similar article about residents are asking questions about these letters, what they mean. Just because you don't, just because you get an unknown letter does not mean you have a lead service line. Very small percentage of all the homes in the town actually have lead service lines, so just wanted to clarify that in this public forum, as it's a very common question we get. And one point too, is that this is ultimately the town's obligation. Even though the service lines are technically owned by the residents, it's on the town to comply with this requirement. And certainly, we want to make every effort possible to work with people on this and to get access to their properties to potentially see their service lines or communicate that we'll be out in front looking at service lines on the town side, but just to reiterate, this is a town requirement under this legislation, water, a water system, water provider requirement. Next slide, please. We have to provide a lead service line replacement plan by November first, 2027. That has to include our database and also properties that at that time, we anticipate having to replace service lines. It also has to include information about how we'll provide filters to people where their service lines are being replaced because their lead are galvanized at the time. And we also have to talk about our outreach plan, funding mechanisms, other information that's required in the legislation or required in the, in the state requirements. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, we'll have to do tap sampling, so if you have a lead line or a galvanized line and we're replacing it, we will do tap sampling. Test results, once the service lines are placed, must be under a certain threshold. Slide, please. And if they're not, what we'll need to do is notify you and provide you other adequate measures in order to provide, you know, have safe drinking water after your service line's been replaced, you know, when that time occurs. There are also other requirements that the water facility must take in order to make sure that their lead levels are under a certain threshold as well. Next slide. So, it's been asked to, you know, is there any leeway with this? So, all exceptions must be granted in writing by MDE. Small water systems serving under thirty-three hundred customers or less may be provided certain flexibility with the lead and copper rule improvements. So on a case-by-case basis, and it's certainly going to be based upon demonstrated compliance. So, if you're in year nine and you've done nothing and you're asking for an extension, good luck getting any wiggle room with MDE. If you're doing your annual reports, sending out letters, attempting to classify unknowns and you ask for certain leeway, you're much more likely to get that from MDE, which I think to date, the town's done a great job at complying with the requirements in all, in all aspects. And if we have a higher replacement rate of thirty-nine per a thousand connections, there may also be flexibility with those requirements. We're slightly under that now with our numbers, but if, again, if you double what our numbers are now, we're actually right there. So, depending on what the rest of the unknowns look like, once we actually get some more documents or do field verification, we might be slightly around, we might be around that number.
So when you say qualify for exceptions, does that mean extensions?
Potentially.
Okay, I didn't know what that would look like.
Right, so, let's say that you forgot to send out your letters by November fifteenth, or if you forgot to submit something on time, or if you do need an extension to replace your service lines. It's going to really be based upon your demonstrated compliance to date.
I see. So it's not like, ah, you don't have to do it type of exception, it's just
Correct, yeah, you do, yeah, yeah. As of now, under the current federal legislation, we have to move forward assuming that this is going to stay in place and we have to adhere to this.
Okay, thank you.
Next slide, please. Mentioned it earlier, the, the letters are meant to notify the customers of what we know about their service line at the time of the inventory. If we, you know, do a replacement, we have to provide them with information on the replacement timeline and what measures are put in place at the time of the replacement. And then additionally too, if the water facilities do have exceedances, they also need to notify the public in certain circumstances as part of these new requirements. Next slide, please. So, in summary, we have to continue to update our database annually, submitted annually, notify residents that are still listed as unknown annually. We'll have to do that over the next ten years. But, you know, we are at the point, I believe, where we need to finish our document research. We actually met as a group, Arrow and the town in quarter one, and the town is currently going through its documents and, you know, turning over all stones, so to speak, to make sure that we don't have anything else that we can look at to rule out service line material from a document standpoint. The next step is going to be going out and choosing what type of field verification the town wants to do in the next year or two to actually eliminate all unknowns and classify every property as lead or non-lead. And in terms of doing that, there's a number of ways we can do it. Some of the towns around here are actually, to look at, to make, let's say that there's, you know, still thirty percent of residents that have not responded to our survey, that they have not uploaded a picture of their service line to the town to categorize it. Some of the towns around here are actually sending out staff to go in basements and look at service line materials so that they can do it directly. On the system side, there are a number of ways to verify it. You know, you can do mechanical excavation with equipment. You can also do hydro excavation, which is a much less invasive and cheaper option to actually create a hole with water pressure to see the exposed water line, take a picture within the right of way on the town side. Those, we also met with about a year ago, a company that actually has a piece of equipment that you put it down, a curb stop or a meter, and it can actually give you readings and based upon those statistics indicate what type of material it is. There's a cost to that. So there's a number of options in terms of our field verification methods. Really comes down to staff's availability to maybe take on some of that, what equipment we have in-house to do it, or also getting quotes potentially to have a third party go out and take, take care of either all of it or a portion of it on the town's behalf. But we do need to, in the next year or two, eliminate all the unknowns so that we can complete our service replacement plan and also have an idea of what the cost is going to be for the town to potentially replace some of these service lines that require it.
It'd be hard for us for Main Street because all of our services, I think, are all in the sidewalks and the road and we just had all them placed.
Right.
So, we would So, we would have to dig up the, the new sidewalks and the roads to verify, because there's no grass.
Yeah, that was, that was all done.
All Main Street was done back in the eighties.
And they documented it all?
Yeah, it should, we should still have the plan somewhere.
Hopefully we do. I'm gonna say we just replaced it all.
Have you identified any lead or galvanized pipes on the town side?
I don't, I, I believe all of those classifications are all based upon the surveys we've gotten so far from customers. I do not believe, I'll follow up if I'm incorrect, but I believe all of them are on the customer surveys that we got in. And we'll want to, and you know, we, we do need a clear picture. Sometimes we have to make our best guesses based upon a picture, based upon color and what we can see. So we will actually need to go out and actually on the town side verify that it is truly a galvanized pipe or a lead pipe. We're not going to assume without doing that, but I believe they're on the customer side.
And when you have to complete that by, for the town side? Over the next several years, it's not this year?
Well, we, we have to have all, the, the goal is to have, not the goal, the requirement is to have all lead and galvanized service lines replaced within ten years. And we are supposed to show every three years that we've met that ten percent replacement requirement. There's not really a date that says you have to have the unknowns categorized by, but if you don't have your unknowns categorized within the next three years, they're going to check it, well, really by twenty-seven, they're going to check in and say, where are you at with your replacement? If the answer is, well, well, we are still doing the unknown verification, they're going to say, well, you're behind schedule. So, so really, we need to do that within the next probably year or so, is eliminate anything that is unknown at this point.
Uh, one good thing, since we're going to replace North Seaton Avenue, we should be able to get most of that.
Right, that, that, I'm sure that's all going to be galvanized or, but also DePaul Street, that was just replaced.
Yeah, so you know that.
We're a little bit ahead of, ahead of the plan, but almost, I bet all of Old Town, what I call Old Town Emmitsburg, anything other than the developments probably going to be, other than Main Street, Main Street should be okay, Main Street and South Seaton Avenue.
Except for, from like my house to track road.
We're not worried about that.
Here's a mine, because I know what I got.
We're gonna get a filter.
I know what I got.
So if the, the newer developments, when letters originally went out, Ms. Wellitz, did they go out to all, all resident, everybody?
To everybody.
Okay, so, I mean, even though, like if it was built, if the development was built after nineteen seventy-two, we know for sure that that wouldn't be an issue. Okay.
As long as we had the plans that show that. If we don't have the plans that show that, then it doesn't count. Even though if we know it was done after nineteen seventy-two, if we don't have the plans that show what the water line specifically is, it doesn't count.
I see. Do we have developments like that? That we know of?
We're working very hard to get all the plans together.
Understood. Understood.
Yeah, just, yeah, typically, it's the properties built before that seventy-two date where we need to do document research. Because, uh, Manjus is right, where even though if I know a house was built in two thousand and one, that's great. You need some kind of documentation to back that up. And, you know, we don't need to submit that documentation as part of the inventory, but similar to the MS four program, at some point, we could be audited. And they might say, where are these plans at? And we just need to be confident that we have that on, on hand or can provide that if requested.
Understood. Okay. All right, so when the unknown letters go out, I know you said they were like pretty similar across all counties. Is, is it the graphic that you had as far as like the town side and the, the homeowner side was, was very helpful? Is that something that was, that's made clear in the letter? That, like, so like if somebody replied and said, here's my, here's my picture?
Yeah.
And then they get another, we still don't know. Will they understand or will we have to field those questions?
Yeah, so I, so I don't know if we have the graphic in the last letter. We have instructions about why we're getting this letter and that the unknown could be on either side.
Oh, understood.
And on top of that too, we're trying to fit it on a one-page back and front, and some of the, we, most of that language is required by M D E based upon their template. So, we, yeah, the goal is to try to make it extremely clear that even though you may have already given us a picture, which we appreciate, we are legally obligated to give you this letter because the other side of the service line may not be verified or vice versa. And again, I, I appreciate the town staff taking on these phone calls. Again, it's every single, around November last year, every town's phones were ringing off the hook with, what's this letter? What does it mean? And I will say to every single resident that I spoke to, because a lot of the questions called, got fielded to me. Everyone was very respectful, just wanted to know what the letter was about, and every, every conversation was pleasant. So, just want to say thank you to the residents for understanding.
Great, awesome. Thank you. Additional questions, comments?
But the only thing, I know you're researching, getting the stuff, so if you can't, are we going back to the developer and saying, getting the documentation from them rather than just looking at our own archives?
Uh, we can do that, but we are organizing our plans. We have a lot to organize. Okay. Um, any other questions? This was very helpful. Yes, thank you. It was very clear, well-presented. And I, I, when you say that you turn in your annual requirements, updating the database, I guess as you find more information, you add it to the database, and that's what they're looking for, that it's
Right.
to be ongoing. Okay.
Right, and, and the town survey is still up and available. So if you did, if you did not reply to that already, we are fielding questions now until this is over. So,
Okay.
Yeah, and every, every week, we check to see if we get any new updates, update the database.
Okay. All right, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right.
We actually have a staff request to postpone the next agenda item. Uh, Clark was supposed to be here tonight.
For the water clarifier?
No, the final plat.
Oh, the final plat.
Yeah, um, he's under the weather, and it could potentially be a lengthy item.
Sure.
August's meeting is very small.
Okay.
So if, if it's okay with the board, can we postpone that till August?
I, I'm fine with that. Others, are you okay with postponing that until Clark is no longer under the weather?
I'm fine.
I'm fine.
Very disappointed.
I can tell. Yes. You're heartbroken.
You don't need an official vote or, or anything, right?
I think you do have to take.
We do?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to?
I'll make a motion to postpone an agenda, I don't know before, consideration, final recordation plat. Subdivision approval?
Thank you. Is there a second? Second. Commissioner Hagan, second. I think Commissioner Hagan by here, yes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. That will be postponed. And then, moving on to for consideration, approval of change order number four for the water clarifier.
Thank you. Uh, this is change order number one related to the water treatment plant clarifier. The request was issued on June third in the amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty cents. It's basically to provide alignment changes to electric power conduit in response to the revised power connection plan provided by Potomac Edison. The, our engineer and contractor were under the impression that Potomac Edison would be responsible to install the entire electric service up to the transformer. The Potomac Edison has different tariffs or different rules depending on what state and what location they're servicing. Unfortunately, for this project, they will not install the entire electric service. So our contractor had to hire an outside third party to complete the installation of the electric service. And so that's why you see this change order in the amount of sixteen thousand eight fifteen. This is absolutely necessary to keep the project moving along and to complete it.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Here, nope. Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I'll make a rest, I'll make a recommendation. I'll make a motion to, to approve change order number four for water clarification, clarification, clarification project on a window contractor for the amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty cents.
Okay. Is there a second? Second. Thank you. Any further discussion or comments or questions? All right. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstain? Motion carries five to zero? Okay. With that, we are setting our agenda?
So this would be the agenda for August fourth, for the consent agenda, approval of proclamation making August fifth, twenty twenty-five, national night out for consideration. Number one, for consideration, approval of ordinance twenty-five dash oh nine, title nine, the temporary taking of vehicles. Again, this is just Ms. Maloka going through and trying to clean up some code. And then number two will be discussion on the implementation of a vacant property registration and tax in the town of Emmitsburg. And then number three would be, consider expiration time period of record, recordation of final plats. Following final subdivision plan approval, staff will provide examples from other jurisdictions relating to time periods imposed for recordation.
And that's what we postponed just now, correct?
Yes.
Do we want to move that up, or is, is Clark planning on being here for the entire?
He would be here for the entire.
So it doesn't, all right. All right, so we'll keep it later, just keep them awake. So, I know, not this meeting, but the last meeting, I think Mr. Jack Deathridge was, had requested a public comment to consider, for the board to consider future garden expansion for next year, not this, not this summer, but for next summer. Is that something we want to put on the agenda for next time? So that he knows what to plan for and what grants potentially.
Yeah, I think that allows us then to seek more grants for the possible expansion, to send it out there. And I have people, I know that's one of the subjects for the Citizen Advisory Committee tomorrow night.
Is the, is the garden?
That, well, just to get the feelings, they feel it should be expanded. I, I've got an email saying that no people are against it. So, try to get a pulse and see if they want to make a recommendation to the board.
Okay. Okay, and I, I believe he did suggest that he was going to provide, what do you call it, a plan for what it would look like for next year? So should we maybe wait until Citizens Advisory or do?
Well, that's tomorrow.
Yeah, so, or do you want to just put it on there and we
I mean, I'm
Together.
I'm I, I, I've spoken to the people that object to it, and I've spoken to people again, I mean, personally, I think it's a good idea to expand it. But
Well, I mean, I think the question is, do we want to bring it to, at least for discussion, on the agenda to talk about as a council, so that he knows what direction to move in for next year?
With the short turnaround, will Mr. Deathridge have his plan ready?
I believe he, he told me he would.
Two weeks? I'm sorry?
That was a yes, yeah.
All right. So we would just need it to put it in the packet into, no more than two weeks, or no?
At least put it on for discussion.
Yeah, we'll put it on for discussion. All right, is that, with that for consensus, okay. Also, we had talked about a couple of times, looking at impact fees. Is that something I, we want to tackle? We probably don't have time at this point, because it's been
It's a quick turnaround.
Yeah.
I would prefer not.
Maybe, maybe September.
Okay.
Okay. And is there, we talked about doing this after the budget. Just coming back and having a quick discussion among the commissioners, looking back at that priority list that we had once, we had once created. But then we, we were knee-deep in budget. Is that something we want to take a look at and refresh our memories? That was something we said we would look at after budget time.
I will only add that the vacant property tax probably would be quite lengthy, just adding that.
Okay.
Up to your discretion, just wanted to throw that out there.
So that's going to be lengthy, and then the record plat, you said earlier, may be lengthy.
Could be. Well, I mean, we could always put it on just for discussion, and then at the end, and if it's too much, we can postpone because it's not a
And so what is that title?
Discussion to review priorities list, commissioner's priority list. When do we make that? Last year, two years ago? Mayor Davis, when do we, it was right after, like, it must have been two years ago then. Okay.
Existing list, not a
The existing list, yes. If it runs long, we can always postpone.
Maybe Brandy could update it. I'm sure she's probably, the town has probably completed some items on the list, I would imagine.
Uh, yeah, I, yeah, there are some that have been checked off the list. Okay. Also, when do we want to look at rescheduling the rental registration? And we talked about maybe turning it into a workshop. Uh, feedback I received from commissioners were, it was a
I'd rather do that sooner or later. I just don't, we keep pushing it off. And I'd rather, you know, address it one way or the other.
So, I did hear from three commissioners who were fine with making that a separate workshop. It's consensus was not July, sometime in maybe August. Thoughts on that? Right.
Right, so a separate meeting in August outside of, the August fourth.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. All right. Is that a date that we should look at now, or? Do you have a date in mind? I would just request not the first week in August because we
August eighteenth is in the middle.
August eighteen?
That's in the middle. I mean, it's the middle of the month.
Oh. I don't even know what day.
It's a Monday, I think.
Yeah, August eighteenth is a Monday.
Nineteenth Tuesday.
Is that one that you're available for?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Oh, on Monday, okay. So August eighteenth, potentially?
If we're gonna have one.
Okay. I think I'm fine. I think I'm fine as well. Okay. All right, so we'll put that on for August eighteenth. Any other items we want to? As if we don't have enough to talk about. Is there a motion to accept the agenda for August fourth as amended?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further conversation or questions? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Okay, motion carries five to zero. And with that, we can, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Okay, motion carries five to zero, and the meeting is adjourned at nine eleven P M.